I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the republic, which stands on the nation under God, with this absolute liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to open the public meeting of the March 19th, 2024, Village of Sack Harbor's Board of Appeals?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
I. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 16th, 2024 meeting? Did anybody have any corrections or addition or?
No.
No? The second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I. Uh, next we have correspondents requiring action, 37 Glover Street is requesting a one-year extension to their uh variances. Could I have a motion to approve the extension for 37 Glover Street?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I. And then we have another correspondence requiring action, which is Page, uh 63 Main Street, and the request is for the planning board to assume lead agency. Would I have a motion?
That's for secret?
Secret for secret, yes. Could I have a motion to approve the planning board's request to assume lead agency?
I'll move this.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Could I interrupt you for one second? I can't see any of you on the screen. I don't know if the screen is off for some reason. Oh, better, thank you.
Do you need us to redo anything?
Oh, I got it all, I just couldn't go forward.
Thank you. Okay, so since we have sort of a heavy agenda tonight, we're going to also implement our procedural resolution, which allows applicants to speak for 10 minutes and the members of the public to speak for three minutes. And at the board's discretion, we can extend those five minutes. Um, so now we'll move to old business, and first up is 41 Redwood Road, 26 Cove Road. Is there someone here? If any, could you just state your names and address for the record? And I know you've been here before, so.
The name's Salado, 45, the name is State. We did submit a revised set of plans, and in that revised set of plans, the obviously the GFA variance that had been requested early on, the GFA of the house at this point, 2295, we've, we have reduced the setback request from 15 feet to 19 feet at its closest point. I think it's an average of 21.68. Um, and we reduced the pyramid variance request to 45 cubic feet, which is an insignificant number regarding that particular variance. Um, we did receive a letter, and the board received the letter as well, from part of Leicester. Um, I'll just address a few of those comments in the letter. The elevations.
Do we have copies of?
You're original, and I didn't.
Right, yeah, I know, I didn't.
You're not happy.
Yeah, do you have? That'll be good. I didn't have time.
I didn't get one. I don't think I had it. Got one? I don't think so.
That's okay, if we could, we could have Craig take over and just do a brief summary of the plans that we.
That's great, yeah, perfect.
Hi, everyone, um, I'd be happy to share a screen, but it says, uh, the host is disabled. Um, sharing, I don't know if there's a way I could, I could share.
No, I can't do that reading, I'll just come back.
Okay, it's not, not letting me share. Okay, let's try one more time. Okay.
Did it work?
Um. No, it's still not letting me share a screen. It says host is disabled, share screen.
All participants now, right up.
So, there we go. Okay. Okay. Hi, everyone, Craig Arm, uh, West Hampton Beach, New York. Um, as Tiffany mentioned, we've spent quite a bit of time reviewing and reducing um the proposed house in multiple areas and multiple renditions at this point. Um, specifically, the GFA area has come down significantly, along with, as mentioned, the uh increase of the front yard setback, reducing that variance, along with the pyramid variance. Um, in, in overview, um, some of the items that we've, we've done to help that, um, in the, one of the letters, there was comments about the house was a rectangle. You can see from the footprint, um, that it's, I think, anything but a rectangle in terms of really trying to use the shape of the property, follow that with the house to meet our design program, um, but also, um, you know, achieve, achieve everything that we need and actually try and give some um thought to the shape of the property, so we don't just create a big block wall. Um, so we've spent quite a bit of time going round and round with that, um, in, including then ultimately still staying with a contemporary design, um, which just helps reduce the overall mass without going up to the allowed uh 35 feet. Um, so we're still maintaining our 25-foot height, including all of our, our railings. With everything, um, so we do have a few small pyramid encroachments still, but overall, we've, we've managed to lessen everything substantially. Um, there's, there's been some discussions on the overall building envelope, and um we've, we've shown those on the plans of what as of right of conforming versus non-conforming, and we are, you know, well over 50% conforming, um, so it's definitely not, majority is non-conforming, it's um about 1,500 and, and change is conforming, um, out of the uh, the, the 22. Um, so, you know, overall, in terms of the scale of the whole house, um, there's a lot of things that should be noted, including the lot coverage with the allowable 20%. We're at about 12 and a half percent. So I, I feel that we've, we've done quite a bit to really minimize um the house for the property and still um achieve the uh, the design requirements of the client. Um, there's um, there were a few comments about the pyramid and some of the drawings um not showing um the uh, just trying to look for where it is, not trying to, that it didn't show where the pyramid was taken from, but from the earlier board request, all of that is shown, um, going around the property line, which is based off the survey from David Saskas, so that's all been addressed. Um, and uh, um, you know, really, just like I said, we've tried, tried our best to try and minimize everything, including from the roof balconies to pretty much you name it, go through everything. Um, didn't know if there was anything else specifically that the uh board wanted to discuss um in reference. Tiffany, should I go through any of the other items from the letter or?
Um, if you would, if you would have gone back to the building envelope, you have A111, the test that we have.
A111?
First floor.
So this is the first floor plan, um, and then this is the plan that shows where the actual 30-foot setback um complies with. Um, and then also maintaining our 65-foot DEC setback, so on that.
Why is pointing is there between for that point?
I'm sorry, Tiffany, repeat.
Setback and the 30-foot line.
So this is the property line. Um, and this is the 30-foot setback line, so there was a total area of 1442 square feet gross area, and of that, 725 is conforming, 717 was non-conforming. Was that the question I'm having a hard time hearing?
And I think that's because we do have a, we're not complying with this 50-foot setback, except by the harbor committee, we have a 65-foot setback, so we're providing a bit more um buffer area between the wetlands um that would normally be required in the village.
Correct, which was the DEC.
Because the DEC requirement creates a building envelope that is extremely constrained on the property.
Um, and, and actually, just from the pure shape of the property, you can see from the angles, if we were able to have that extra 15 feet um going backwards, um, if we were allowed to, there'd be no issue in just sliding everything back and not needing any variance whatsoever, if that was the case. Um, but obviously, that's nothing we can do about that at this point in terms of the uh, the 65-foot requirement. Um, and then, so that's the, that was with gross area, and then in terms of on the second floor, um, it was 1,240 square feet gross of that 719 is conforming and 521 is non-conforming. So as you can see, more than, more than half of the house is conforming. Um, and uh, I know there was part of the letter did mention something about an 800 square feet, which is a, a minimum uh code requirement for floor area, but just between these two, just of our conforming, certainly we would be entitled without any variances to, to greater than that, um, just, just as of right. Anything else, Tiffany, that you can?
I think that's it. Um, I have, on a prior occasion, provided the board with a memorandum, and I'll do so again this evening, um, and it cites to various precedent throughout the village, particularly in the area of Redwood. Um, and those instances are cited in here. What I would mention is, in our analysis and trying to determine sort of what was an average square footage of houses in Redwood, based on the approvals granted by this board and the harbor committee, we ran into a real difficulty because the GFA isn't on any plans. So, except for, let me see, there was one set of plans that had the GFA on it in the last five years, and that was 88 Redwood Road, which was granted, it's a waterfront lot, was granted relief from this board for a structure 23 feet from the rear yard lot line and pyramid relief, and the house itself has a GFA of over 3,000 square feet. Um, as I said, in doing that review, we went through all of the sets of plans associated with a lot of properties that were, that are comparable to this, and unfortunately, we couldn't determine without sitting with an architect and scaling it all out what the GFA was, because we're just not keeping track. Um, but I would say with some level of definitiveness that the expansions on those houses were pretty significant, um, just based on the floor plans that I reviewed. Um, as far as the letter is, the letter that you received this afternoon from Target Leicester, um, as I said, the elevations are on the, on the drawings, um, I, that was a question that was asked, was also asked, if there's any health report with correspondence. We do have filed health department application, we have not received a notice of incompletion, which we would have received, the health department recognizes that there's a reason on the property for the neighboring septic system, and they're not, they're not telling us that we cannot have a septic system, they're waiting for the village to approve before they vote. Um, and just to address the letter from Mr. DeSessa very quickly, although I don't think it's all that relevant, um, I will just say that there was never an application before any board, in the, I'm not, for a single resident residence. The only application that was ever filed before this board was to unmerge the properties as they had been merged by law. Um, and so I don't know where we got the idea of 800 square feet, would have been something that someone would have said out loud, because.
He did, he did a walk, I believe he did a walk-on with a proposal for two structures on the property before this zoning board, just thought.
Because he was trying to separate the properties into two, so that he could be able to have.
But he had some rough drawings and, just so that you know, if you didn't.
Oh, I, I reviewed the application, there was never an application for relief for a house, there was relief requested for, so I don't know that the letter is, is, it's a little misleading in an upper ways, um, but I think we have met the criteria that the board requires, the benefits of the applicant far outweighs any detriment to the neighborhood. There will not be a significant change in the neighborhood, we're still, we are still pending in front of the harbor committee and do have to appear in front of the architectural review board as well, at which screening and architecture will be addressed. Um, and at this point, I think we've done pretty much everything the board has asked us to do, and if anything else that you would like us to do, to take it under advisement, please, and.
So just to confirm, you, you have received um something back from the DEC though, establishing the 65.
I, that is included as in my, the GFA is in there with the 65 foot.
Okay.
Establishing that.
Uh, do any board members have any questions?
I don't have any questions, no.
At the moment?
No. Uh, yes, I, what has the harbor committee indicated?
We have not been to the harbor committee yet, um, there's kind of no point in bouncing between the two boards until they get through one.
Thank you.
So we have not been there, other than as a living on a neighborhood.
Uh, Damon, I know you're out there somewhere, do you have any questions?
Uh, thanks, no, I don't.
Okay.
Craig, anything else?
I believe that's, that's all from uh, from my end, but uh, yes, we do have the DEC approval, and we do have health department pending uh, the village board's approval, yes.
Okay, thank you. So um, are there any members of the public that would like to speak, uh, just come forward? Just state your name and address for the record.
I, Dave Harvey, D and D Harvey Architects, 21 Cove Road.
Great.
Um, I live and work on 21th Cove Road, which is across the street from this. Uh, I reviewed the, the updated application, and basically, I challenge the square footage of relief from this diagram shown. It appears to be almost 50% of the first floor plan, 50% of the second floor plan, and 50% of the roof plan. All need relief. If you take those three items, you create volume, that would actually mean that this project needs almost a 50% of volume's relief from either the street side setback or water side setback, either one you choose. Um, as an architect, I truly believe the streetscape is very important. This house sits far in front of two adjacent houses. It's also on the entering corner of Redwood Island. Um, we are all literally gonna have to drive around this building. Again, the, I think that the volume, if the architect could pull up the colored 3D rendering, you'll see the light yellow in his 3D rendering actually represents the amount of variables you this project uses. And as a new construction, this would be a massive precedent setting ordeal. If that white yellow represents, fits presents the volume of the structure, I would contest that they should be asking for 50% of what they're asking. And then the odd shade bedding would create, they should then ask for setback relief, and it's then up to the public to decide, well, whose setback relief is more appropriate. I think this is a big ask, it's too big. Um, I also have a memorandum that was public record, which was in your building apartment, from June 6th, from Boris. I would just ask if any of this has been addressed on the new application? So I can. It's public record, uh, I haven't seen any of it addressed, I'm on record for asking for a comprehensive site plan. I also have some setback departments by the health department, since they don't actually have health department approval, I'd like to submit the required setbacks to residences, foundations, and um public drainage drywells, there's public drainage on the property, I don't think they can achieve a 25-foot setback to their proposed septic system. I think it's very important, you know, you guys are going first on this, if they'll forget their setback relief, that's a bootstrapping technique, and their site plan, they have no comprehensive site plan, that actually works. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Yes.
Please come forward. Hi, just state your name and address for the record. Have you spoken to us before?
Yeah, we.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I mean, I basically agree with everything Dave just said, and I think that they should suggest some sort of alternative that, that's in keeping with the setbacks, and that's more in keeping with the architecture in the neighborhood, I think you're gonna be setting like a, a big precedent of, you know, what people can get away with in, in Redwood or for new construction and for, you know, the shape of the house, and um, I just think that this will have a long-term effect in allowing variances of, of these sorts of designs, where you're just kind of following the contour of this setback requirement rather than bringing something in that's more tasteful. And so I think it's not only a big ask, it's, it's, they're not presenting something that's palatable to the neighborhood and that will render like something that's architecturally pleasing. Um, and then I also agree with Dave about the setbacks of the drywalls, like they're not really showing a comprehensive drainage plan, and we know that this whole area floods and that, that catch basin already overflows into the street, so, I mean, almost every house I've built in Redwood and by Pally, like we've had to raise the grade and put in retainage uh for the septic and for drywells, they're not showing any of that, so I don't really know how to get around that. Um, and then that would also raise the house to be taller, or they'd have to shrink it, it just doesn't seem like they've done their homework in terms of, of that as well, so. And I just think that uh, you know, basically this, I know you're not here to review the architectural integrity of it, but you can see from the shape of it, that there's nothing like that in Redwood at all, like, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. So I think if they could present something that closely resembles the footprint of, you know, you know, like Dave said, and maybe bring it back a little, or ask for variance to square off like a normal-sized house or a normal-sized footprint, that would be much more agreeable to the neighborhood. And I just want to second everything Dave said, because he said it better than I did. All right.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Uh, yes. You could just state your name and address for the record.
Drew Harvey, 21 Cove Road.
And have you spoken to us?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, so kind of going back to what's already been said, but then also what's been brought up by the individual who's been taking your suit plans, uh, 50% of the building is non-conforming, that's what he continued to say in, in his description of it. When you're left, if we go back to that spot, that slide with the two opposing setbacks, you are left with the building envelope, that if you wanted to build something on this property and you took it to your architectural team, you could design a building that fits in that building envelope to ask for as minimal variance and setback requirements as possible. You get about a 1,000-square-foot house. It's above the minimum square footage allowed in Sack Harbor, it goes back to the board's suggestion earlier on, start with the minimum and work up, don't start with 3,000-square-foot house and shave off 700 square feet to try to get a favorable vote. It should be a smaller house, it should be in keeping with the neighborhood, it is very doable, no one is saying that the property is unbuildable, but you need to be more around an 800 to 1,000-square-foot house and not up at a free bed, free bath, 2,300-square-foot house. Super simple, change the design, come back with a real plan that the board can review, the public can comment on, and we can all move forward with the process. Um, I would strongly suggest you guys vote no to this plan, because it just keeps kind of that, and it's not the plan that's appropriate for the lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, hi, uh, just state your name and address for the record.
That is a very speaking.
It's above you.
Sorry, John Target, uh, I represent the neighbor Samuel next door, I have spoken before.
Yes.
Uh, so a lot of my comments were touched on by some other neighbors, and I just want to mention that, that the house that is still proposed is 73 feet long, and it's a full 25 feet high, right? This is not a story and a half, or uh, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's two boxes on top of each other. So when you come into Redwood, you've got to drive around the corner, and you're essentially seeing a 73-foot-long wall, 50% of which they're asking to be within setbacks, which are meant to prevent what exactly they're all worried about. It's also important to note that none of these neighbors are being nimbied, they're not saying, hey, we don't want this, there's, it's a buildable lot, it'll get built on, that's fine. What they're asking is that some, some of the code is preserved in the process. And I also 100% agree that you don't start with a 3,000-square-foot house that could be on any lot in any part of town, and then work your way back. We all know, I mean, most of the people with real, that either sat on the boards or architects or have done land planning, we know how this works, you find your building envelope, you design within that, and then maybe you ask for some relief, and that building envelope is, is an odd shape, so you can imagine a scenario where someone has a 700-square-foot footprint, hey, that's a 1,400-square-foot house, but then a portion of that, because of odd shape, may need setback relief for the front yard. You don't put the entire house in the front setback, right? So you start from your building envelope, you work out, there's a pose, hitting a housing could be designed for anywhere in the village, and working back. And, and that's, that's the way this, this works, just, you just simply can't put the house you want on this property, it's, it's a constrained lot, it's a big lot, right? So setback, a lot of times someone has a big system house, but there's some before zoning, and they come back for some small relief. This would completely annihilate the code, because you're, you'd be saying, go ahead and build the house you want on this property, 50% of which would be the setback, um, hey, you want nine-foot first-floor ceilings, go for it, you want eight-foot six-second-floor ceilings, go for it, you want a roof deck, go for it, you want, you want a bulky, big house, 50% with a setback, go for it, I mean, it's just the wrong process, starting the wrong way, it has to start from the building envelope and work its way out. And my last comment is just that this is almost a year now that we've been before this board, in my letter today, I said, at some point, and I, I get, I get wanting to work with an applicant, but at some point, I, I think it maybe is just time to say to the applicant, hey, you know, this is gonna be denied, and you should come back to us with an, an application that, that again, starts on the right spot, it should start from the building envelope and work its way out, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience to speak? Uh, how about I'm Zoom? How about I'm Zoom?
Peter Manchimelli, applicant on South Hampton, Eva. Hello, everyone. I just want to address John first, Mr. Target, the last time I interacted with John, he told me he was trying to want to speak with me, I thought this was kind of funny, see, he never said that, so it was completely unfair. A letter in its entirety that John submitted to the board is incredibly unfair as well, consistently with his last interaction with us. We could put a 35-foot-tall house there, we tried to keep it compact, we, we thought of the environment, we thought of the neighborhood, I've always loved Redwood, it's been one of my favorite places for 20 something years. The front of this house with the relief, if you were to give us the relief we have right now, is almost parallel with Herb Samuel's house next door, it's in line, it's within a foot or so of Herb's house. This is not inconsistent with the neighborhood. Tiffany gave you paperwork, it shows there's five other houses that are closer to the street, all in a few houses of this. Tiffany gave you paperwork that shows there's five other houses that are closer to the street, all in a few houses of this. We did a flat roof because we think it's less impactful. And I've made a lot of sacrifices to the house itself. It's a small three-bedroom house with only one room deep and a little foyer in the front. You know, there's not much more I can do to compact this. I've come back to the board every time with revisions. Site plans exist. They're in your file. The health department has told, um, um, what's his name, over at Delandro, John, that, you know, everything looks good. We just have to wait for Sac Harbor. The ARV, I'm sure, is going to have an opinion on this. I don't think that's for this board, in my opinion. The ARV is going to have an opinion on the shape of the house and maybe there's landscaping covenants, et cetera. I want this to look pretty too. Val knows me for 20-something years in the building industry and I build beautiful things. I care about the things I build. I'm not some of the other builders out here. So I'm really trying to take all this into consideration. I think I am going to build something very, very nice for this neighborhood. And it's, as far as the setbacks in the street, I think it's extremely consistent. And I think the 2,200 and change square footage is not just thirty percent less than the GFA were allowed, but it's also smaller than most of the houses in the neighborhood. So I really think, I mean, respectful, I keep coming back here. I'm trying to do everything you want to do. I just think the law is constrained because of some, if you look at other lots this size or larger houses, and because we got the wetlands permit with DEC and the harbor committee, typically additional relief is granted when you have to go for a conservation permit like that. So I think everything here is consistent with the neighborhood and most other applications in the Hamptons that are waterfront properties. And I just wanted to share that. If you have any technical questions, septic system, site plan, we do not need to change the grade. That's a fact. We have a site plan from Delandro as well. John Letterman, by the way, Letterman's the senior guy at Delandro. If you'd like, Craig can walk you through the septic, the site plans. There's no grading changes at all. There be questions for the board or insight or anything I can help with or Craig? I'm very involved in this process, by the way, as a designer too.
I don't have any questions.
No.
I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
Hello, hello?
Hi, how are you? Can you please state your name?
Uh, this is Greg Luke Meyer. I'm a homeowner on Redwood, both at 141 Redwood Road and 7 Cornell Road. I talked to you folks before. My perception, and I'm also an architect, my perception is that Redwood is basically a park with fairly modest houses in it. Houses are setback from the street and they're seen through landscaping. Houses are fairly subservient to nature. And what I'm looking at for the site plan is that it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to add any landscaping to this project, both because of the parking area, the septic area, the stormwater management structures. So it's going to be very hard to see this building through uh, through landscaping. And I know that that's one of the things that others have brought up that uh, right now, as you drive into Redwood, it's very calm. It's full of nature. And it sets a tone and this will be a block that kind of sets the tone for the entire Redwood. And we know that zoning regulations are there for a purpose. They're to protect, uh, from overbuilding. They're to establish a scale and character for a neighborhood, to protect neighbors. And while I think the, the, the plan is fairly clever and it seems to get everything in, it's still a building and it's not a building in, in nature. Uh, it's still a wall, even if it's a crenellated wall. So I think that, you know, I look at the, the, uh, the site plan and the building and the fact that it's had to move so close to the street. And it's very different from any other house that I'm aware of in, on Redwood. And I've owned property in Redwood since 1976. So, uh, it, it's kind of character. Building a 1,400-square-foot house would probably be fairly appropriate. As one of the previous speakers said, start from what you can do and then add to make sure that you perhaps overcome some of the constraints of the site shape. Uh, but let's start from the basics and, and get builder rather than start from the maximum and try to get smaller. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, so do Tiffany, do you have anything else to add before we?
Just to address Mr. Luke Meyer's concerns, he was also in front of this board and received relief in July of 2023. The high post residents, 20.1 feet from the front yard baseline with 433 cubic feet of pyramid. Uh, and again, a house of unhoned GFA, but I would say it's pretty safe. It's larger than what we're expecting. Um, one of the things that I, I say particularly before this board, and I think is particularly important in this regard, is that our zoning is set up for half-acre lots. That's the way to set up. There are barely any half-acre lots in the village and we are still trying to oppose half-acre zoning on lots that are 11,000. That's where we run into a serious issue, particularly on on lots, waterfront lots like this, where we have a DEC setback of 65 feet, leading us with an extremely small building. Um, I think that we've done everything that we possibly can here. If the board has any further suggestions, um, we'd be happy to take them under advisement. But again, you know, and I apologize if we'll have to get to a couple of pages out of my memo. For whatever reason, when I was printing, I printed five pages instead of the even ones. So some of that have been left out, but I will get to those.
Great, thank you. Um, so, well, yes, I did. So at this point, we can do two things, Tiffany, and I don't know if you have an opinion. We can take a straw vote now and leave it open or we can close the public hearing and take a straw vote?
I think you should also discuss it, make some comments on the record.
Right, yes. So, um, and you mean after before we close?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so let's just, I will give you an opinion about how we're all feeling. Um, I, I think it's still a lot of volume outside the acceptable range of what.
I think it's very challenging and I have the opinion that less is more and should be reduced even more.
Yeah, I agree. And I think it's a particular challenge because it's one of the lowest lying lots in all of Redwood. It's almost at sea level. Um, and we have been saying since the very beginning that, and others have commented that we prefer that you start with, with what could be allowed within zoning and work out from that rather than start with your dream house and then try to cut it back a little bit. So, um, as this stands now, I would not be in favor of granting the variances required.
Your comments.
I would, I would agree with that just based on, you know, the, it's the potential of what this variance would do to the neighborhood. Because it sets a precedent for every house newly proposed. I could say this parcel is given clearly to an extent where it doesn't matter size or front yard setbacks being furnished. So as a designer, architect, I would say start, as Mr. Targett said, build the buildable area and work beyond that. Coming in here with this is like, it's a 50-mile-hour speed limit and then came at like 97 miles an hour and little by little it's being pulled back. But now you're at 90 miles an hour. It's still over the speed limit in terms of this mass and scale. And that tree rendering at one point was red. We already see that over 50% of this mass is known for the front wall. So I would likewise say pull it back and if it can be reduced in what's allowed with a little infraction asked, not maybe 50%.
Um, I think that we, you know, definitely think openly granting variances because we know that there are variances that we needed to build anything on this property. But it just, it seems like so much volume of the house is within that setback area.
Well, and I'd just like you to consider as well, I know.
Let's, let, let me just finish with, and let's, I don't know, Damon, do you have comments also?
I really don't have anything to add that, you know, that isn't redundant. It's just, it's just too big for the lot and I'll just, I'll just leave it at that because it's, it's been well put. I like the speed limit analogy.
I think you've heard from us and we're not going to come to agreement. So I think it's time for you to realize that and to go back and come back with a fundamentally different plan.
May I ask a question? If there's other houses that Tiffany submitted that are closer to the street than this.
Well, that's not the only issue, sir. That's not the only issue.
Okay, but you have to take into consideration that it's usually not the whole house that is that goes to the street. There's usually an element.
The other houses are closer. If you do average, they're closer than us because it's a straight line to the street and they might be 19 and a half feet. But we're averaging almost 22.
Well, I mean, we'd have to examine each case and some of them might be.
But that's what we're going to do.
Well, since she submitted them, we actually will have to examine them on the record.
Yeah.
So we'll have to look at them all and either distinguish them or find if they're precedent setting.
Right.
You know, follow them. So.
So do you?
You have to look at them each one.
Right, so do you want us to? Do you want us to table it?
But just, but you also know that there are always differences that can be found. So yes, we will go back and we will study them. But my sense of Redwood and of those other houses, there will be differences that will justify whatever things have been granted and they're not going to be precedents that are insurmountable. And at some point, and as you say, it's been a year here. We're going to look at them. I'm just trying to give you, but I don't think you want to
No, we're listening.
Take it, a heads up that this is not going to work. It's been a year. So yes, we'll go back and look at them. We'll talk about it next month or the month after. Well, at some point, we've got to close it.
I'm being honest with the board. I'm not sure what else to do at this point. I'm trying to get three-bedroom.
Well, you got a property, you got
Well, it may not accommodate.
Something that wants to go in a space that only holds one pound. That's what the problem is.
It's about the site. The site.
This is a really unusual site.
Right, it may not.
It's not consistent with the size.
It's not unusual size.
Yeah, but it may not accommodate the house that you want to put there. It's, it's about putting the right house on that parcel. And it may be only a two-bedroom house. It may not be a three-bedroom. There might be a three-bedroom house that there aren't as many bathrooms or I don't know what the solution is. But it's just that it may be that you're trying to put too much program on two, on a, on a site that's too difficult and too small to, to be able to accommodate all of that.
And I just want to point this, I'm a little concerned that the architect that stood up before, he seemed to create zoning regulations and the board seemed to accept them over volume. I don't even, I honestly don't know what that interpretation was.
Listening.
But, but it is a interpretation that I've never heard before. And so, you know, had he been the architect of reference, I'm sure he'd be supportive of the application. I just don't want, I want the board to be aware of what's going on.
No, no, we're, we're totally understand.
We've come to these conclusions on our own.
Yeah, we totally understand. So could I have a motion to table, um, 41 Redwood, 26 Cove Road to the
Next meeting.
Yeah.
So the advice of council is that we have to table this.
You do.
Because I'm really reluctant to do that, but on the advice of council, on the advice of council, okay?
Yes, that's my advice.
Okay, to the, because there's going to be new submissions. I, to the April 16, 2024 meeting, could I have a motion to table that? So move second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Next on the agenda is 85 Street.
Hi.
Aye.
Hi, I'm Dennis Foyle. On your suggestion.
And could you, you're the, you reside at 85 High Street, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ray?
And it's on your suggestion, we did the setbacks, we did a ton of the shed. Uh, changed it to five-feet setbacks, set it by the line. So Keith Voits, the architect who's normal plan, dropped the the top plate down four inches. Uh, we confirmed, David, our next one, David. And then I don't know that they connected it down at the lab. We do have the updated plans in the survey.
Yes, great, thanks. So.
And we also are starting to practice.
Yeah, we didn't have any, the board, we seemed to have an exemption to the deck. It was also that subject about the shed.
Yeah.
Um, for now, it's the fifty percent setbacks, like five feet, it's probably, I mean, it's going to be a pyramid variance of, where is it here?
63.
Where's the numbers?
Yeah.
363.
Oh, 363, thank you, him.
Yeah.
So, um, it is a shed. It's also going back close to where there historically was a shed.
That's right. There was a shed that had been destroyed. We said it was so many years ago.
Right. And, and adjacent to a garage that's closer to the property. So the, can you, board members have any comments or questions?
No, I don't. So Damon, do you have any more suggestions?
No, don't have any issues. They did what we asked them to do with the, with the sheds.
I think we need to come up with something in our decision that doesn't set a precedent that accessory structures can be five feet from the property line instead of 15 feet. I'm not sure exactly what that is.
Well, it's 10 feet. It would be 10.
10 feet, I'm sorry.
Right, that's okay.
But it's a 50%.
Right, it's a 50%. I know, that's the only thing.
Uh, so would it be that there had been something there? Even though legally, because it was torn down years ago, it doesn't apply. But we would want to state that in the decision that that was part of the guidance that we took.
I think that's unacceptable.
And that placement over there had no impact on
No.
neighboring properties.
Right, and the neighbor actually preferred the location.
Yeah.
And it is also next to a, a, a building that's already closer to the property line. So it sort of puts the masses of the building in one corner.
Yep. So those two things, that it's next to a, a, a structure on the
Right.
neighboring property and the fact that there used to be
Right.
I think
That structure there.
Discussion as well.
Right, and the neighbor has basically said that he approved that location. And about do you have any?
Wanted to be a person.
How much did they lose? Something happened. We had a technical glitch.
Is there anybody in the public halls or something?
Well, we lost our
Barbara, you there?
Do we need to repeat some of our comments?
Damon, you're muted.
He can't hear us.
Are you? He can't hear us. We can't hear him.
Yeah. Barbara can't hear us either.
Oh, she can hear you. Can't, we can't hear her.
We can't hear her.
Okay.
Does, do we need to repeat any of our comments?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
I heard everything you said. I just couldn't unmute myself. Now I'm back. Barbara, you there?
Yes, the last thing I heard was you were asking Val if you had any comments and then it cut out for me.
Okay, great, so word to you, Val.
I agree with Tim's comments on the, uh, pre-existing condition and how this won't necessarily set a precedent. You know, with that, that the generator is being located to a conforming placement.
Yes, that placement that it was saying was just when they did the survey, it was sitting at every inch deep place. So it's placed in a conformant situation.
Great. So any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
Okay, uh, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for eighty-high Street?
So moved.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I'm assuming I'm in favor of this.
I'm in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
Ham?
Excuse me?
You in favor of this?
Granting the variants.
Yes. Okay, could I have a motion to have um, have our attorney uh, write a favorable decision approving the variances for eighty-high Street?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Get rid of one thing.
All right, next on the agenda is twenty.
Just so you know, the next three are being withdrawn, so you can.
Totally withdrawn.
Into withdrawal.
Okay, so could I have a motion to withdraw twenty Lighthouse Lane?
The motion's to withdraw.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Could I have a motion to withdraw twenty Lighthouse Lane?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, could I have a motion to withdraw three sixty-nine Madison Street?
Make a motion to.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're on to new business. And first is fourth, forty-six Terry Drive. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. Walter Owen, forty-six Terry Drive.
Could you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth. I'll just, that's about the truth. Great, thank you. We may proceed.
Thank you.
Just make a motion.
Oh, sir, I'm sorry. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for forty-six Terry Drive?
Make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks.
The pressure uh, that I'm going to fight from today and I apologize for those that are on. Good evening. My name is Walter Owen and my family and I respectfully request your consideration and approval of a variance removed on our home at forty-six Terry Drive. Our application is driven by our deep commitment to create a safe, sustainable and beautiful home in our family, which also blends with the unique character and environments. Our mental sensibilities of Sag Harbor and the Sands community more specifically. What began as a second story addition in my mind onto the current structure has been modified to rebuild and we're going to rebuild the entire structure due to an inferior cement block foundation. Uh, we propose a twenty-two hundred eighty-four square foot, two-story off-site constructed home over a poured concrete foundation, a home of house and office, kitchen, four bedrooms, four and a half baths, a lounge, dining area and roof deck to support our work from home lifestyle and enjoy the water views that this home provides. Our request centers on three specific variances under sections three hundred dash four point three and three hundred dash nine point three D at the Sag Harbor Village Road. We understand the importance of maintaining the aesthetic and structural integrity of our community and in this respect and understanding that we seek the following. Front yard setback variance. We propose to maintain our front yard, west, the west side setback of twenty-four point six feet where the code requires thirty-five feet. This variance is ten point four feet. Uh, it's essential to accommodate the non-conforming status of this lot, point one nine acres, but also maintains the current setback as they are in various, you're building on the exact same twelve hundred and six square foot uh, footprint. Septic has already been granted for this house. Um, the next variant, side yard setback for window wells. On the east side of the property, which is adjacent to our neighbor who surrounds this property with a flag lot, we seek setback of eleven point six feet for window wells where fifteen feet is typically required. The modest relief of three point four feet would allow us to enhance natural light access, improve ventilation in the basement, significantly improving the energy efficiency and providing bedroom egress without adversely impacting the neighbors. This is aligned with the relief provided uh, with the pool application was granted uh, August of two thousand twenty-three. The third setback relief, pyramid. Our design proposes an intrusion into the sky plane of nine hundred and sixty-four square, sixty-four point two cubic feet where zero is, is allowed to accommodate a higher roof line of the second story on east side only. The proposed design minimizes the visual impact and per- observes light lines in keeping with the character of our community. This is less variance than our neighbors at fifty-four Walker and forty-seven Terry Suck and were granted by this board. All of these homes now contribute to the enhanced beauty of this particular community. Our application is the result of careful planning, thoughtful consideration and our neighbors, the environment and heartfelt commitment to contributing positively to the Sag Harbor community. We have engaged with local architects planning to ensure our plans reflect the building's values of preservation, sustainability and community. But more important, we stepped with our neighbor at forty-eight Terry, the Pierces, and modified the plans to accommodate their feedback, including adding transom windows on the east side, adding flower boxes to the rooftop deck uh, for privacy and transition changes in the facade cladding to make the house more interesting from their perspective. To that end, I have a letter of support from the neighbors and I believe you have it in your files as well. Uh, and again, their property, this is a corner property on Meredith and Terry and their property surrounds the, the rear side and uh, and backs uh, back of this property. So seeking these variants, we are motivated by a desire to create a home that expects the natural and built heritage of Sag Harbor, meets the needs of our family and sets a precedence for thoughtful, environmentally conscious development. We believe that these adjustments, with the development of thought, thought that will not only enhance the character of our neighborhood, but also demonstrate a commitment for the values that make Sag Harbor a unique and cherished place. We respectfully request your support for this application and are fully committed to working with you, our neighbors and the broader community to address any concerns and to ensure this home contributes positively, positively to the community. Thank you for your consideration and we are deeply appreciative for the time and dedication that I offer. I'll entertain any questions.
Great, thank you.
About this particular project.
Um, number one.
Yes, sir.
Based on the existing house where you have had variances.
Yes.
You are tearing down this house and restoring the whole house?
So we, we initially envisioned that we would put a second story on top of what was already existing. We have some compromised uh, situations in the basement with the cement block, the board foundation, ten inch walls for modular structures is what's required as opposed to an eight inch cement block. Um, so yes, we want to tear down what's there, rebuild in the exact same footprint, not uh, encroaching any additional to, to what's not already there. And then um, the only relief we're asking for is, it's, it's at twenty-five feet at the top of this house, but on the rear side, the east side facing the Pierces' house, we have uh, nine hundred and sixteen. I, I, I said that number earlier, but nine hundred and sixteen.
Where did you initiate your pyramid? Because you have a slope on this.
So, so.
Coming, coming up this.
It's only on the, it's on this.
Yeah.
Only on the other side. On that.
Uh, back.
Yeah.
Square of the house.
Um, did you consider, I noticed that you do have um, nine foot, six and nine foot uh, ceiling heights on the second floor. Do you consider lowering those at all to reduce the pyramid?
We, we did and after talking with David, they were supportive about this uh, whole process and, and adhering to some of the things that they asked us to change. That was not something that they were concerned with. And then they broke the letter of support, so no, we didn't, we wanted that height.
I, I just have a general question. Um, has there been anything set up in the community, in the, within the community organization to uh, provide feedback on individual projects as they come up that wouldn't be legally binding, but would give the boards in Sag Harbor some indication of how the entire community feels? Just because we've been reading over the last several years about there's a lot of concern about all the changes that are going on there. Is there anything like that?
So you know, I think it depends. It, it, so to answer your question from my perspective, I don't believe they're having, I was the vice president in, in that community.
Okay, okay.
But what I've tried to do is make sure that I talk to the neighbors.
I understand, yeah.
And, and let them know.
No, I just wondered if they might have, or maybe in the future, they would suggest that everyone in that community first present their plans to them. Uh, cause I think that would mean a lot. Not that we're necessarily going to have any problem with this, but. But it was sort of, we wouldn't be thinking, well, are we doing something that the rest of the the, the whole community doesn't know about and they're not going to be happy with it later, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I, I think if you look at this, we were allowed seventeen hundred square feet. We kept it at the twelve hundred.
Yeah, okay, okay. No, I was just curious about that other question. Okay.
Appreciate it.
That hasn't happened yet. Okay. Thanks.
And then um, the, the second story deck, that's existing and it's going to stay. Is that correct?
So the front deck is, is staying, the, in the second story is a new proposed deck. So the, but the, the front deck that's there, yes, second story deck will stay, but that is already something that is being granted. We don't want to tear that down.
Okay.
It's beautiful views.
Okay, I have no other questions.
I just, thi- this is somewhat in character of the house across the street from you. Uh, in terms of ha- uh, height and, and so forth, so that there are houses in that area that have higher uh, pyramids.
And, and if you look at fifty-four, I think that pyramid is relief on both sides. And again, we didn't, we didn't need it first of all on the front because the house sits so far back, even though it's still within the thirty-five feet, but um, it's a, it's a small house.
That up to you, business?
No.
I.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. That was a very. Excellent presentation. Nice scale house with a property. Yeah, it's being respectful in, from what I've heard that the Sands community, it's more has run that scale. And this is an part made with the communities in character of the neighborhood.
Over my stone, I'm trying to stay within that. That is a.
Yes.
You've done.
Damon, do you have any comments?
Oh, I, I like the fact that you use the existing footprint. Uh, you know, that's, that, that's great. And then you're only asking really for, you know, you know, something within what we've granted for uh, for a sky plane. So, you know, very reasonable.
Okay, and um, is there anyone from the public to speak to forty-six Terry Drive?
Anybody on Zoom?
And for the record, you will have the letter from the Pierces. Thank you.
No.
I think it came as an email today.
Uh, no, I mean, there's nobody else to speak.
No, no.
Okay, great. Uh, any other comments from the board members?
No.
Okay, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for forty-six Terry Drive?
Let me.
So um, I think that this seems fine and keep with.
Who's second?
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
He's, ham seconded. All in favor? Aye.
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 Sorry, trying to get it over. Um, so um, I, it's all right, I think it's in character with the neighborhood. I mean, the only significant thing is the uh, pyramid, but the neighbor has indicated they're fine with that, so.
Agreed.
I concur.
Yeah, and it's not a huge. No, okay, so could I have a motion? Do you have our uh? I've already sent me approves. Oh, great, thank you. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay.
She doesn't have to take six.
No, next uh, is twenty Henry Street.
I make a motion to open this and they're going to disable, so our architect was having difficulty logging in, so they.
So we're tabling, I'm sorry, is there a table?
We're gonna open.
Open and close. Table, okay. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for twenty Henry Street?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Could I have a motion to table twenty Henry Street to the, I can't remember what it was, the.
April sixteen.
April sixteen meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is forty-eight Redwood Road. Great.
Maybe you're about Ivan's South Park Environmental Department applicant. I'll give you a little quick rundown here.
Could you um, raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth? The truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you. May proceed.
Okay, so the problem.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Oh, fair enough. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for forty-eight Redwood Road?
You want a bit?
Second.
Second.
Aye. Great, you may proceed.
Barbara, could you put?
Sorry, Val and Tim.
Sorry, Ham.
And I'm sorry, can I get the speaker's name again?
Yes, Matt Ivins, South Fork, in Marvell.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll give you a quick background. Uh, the property owner was installed with fifteen by twenty-six point five uh, square foot. Swimming pool, a three hundred sixty-six square foot cable patio surrounding eastern and southern side of the pool. It's got a rotating wall surrounded, the proposed pool patio uh, that will be done within four feet in height and no, it's a certain three feet from the property boundaries. I, the bit of a letter on board sick disclarifying the public notice, it lists three variances, I need. I think the first one is correct, the second and third one, or it did not be correct. I don't know if you guys have seen that. I just want to fill up the record. Go ahead and run through that.
I think someone who has done here with the building department on a, remember Danielle? Um, I don't know. Or whoever cares. Someone spoke to the building department, agreed that the variance is being considered. The control and tools to do.
I think so.
Well, he's in a front yard.
The only things that we have are the front yard, backyard. That's it.
One is for the pool in the front yard, one is for the spa in the front yard, assuming. And then the third one is for the pool equipment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the pool equipment is the incorrect one?
Where's the pool equipment?
That's on the west side of the house.
Right, so that's not.
Okay, but they broke it. I suppose they did, so they have the pool.
Can I have a letter on this, though?
Yeah. Okay.
And so that it was necessary.
All right, so you are breaking it up.
But. But the pool equipment is not, the pool equipment is not.
Now.
That doesn't, as far as I know, do you see any problem with?
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with the pool equipment, right?
It's fifteen feet.
It's fifteen feet, it's in a side yard.
No, no, that's all right.
I, yeah, I don't think, I don't think we need one for the pool.
No.
Where is it?
Oh, it's hard to find, it's right there.
Oh, oh, okay.
So it's seventeen.
Seventeen feet, yeah.
Yeah. And it's not in a front yard.
Yeah. The only other one, um.
Unless he's saying it's in a rear. No, it still would have fifteen foot setback, doesn't, so.
Yeah, no, that should be fine.
That should be fine. Okay, you can.
Okay, I mean, I'm here, you know, I'm here basically for the pool, it is a front yard opposite the shoreline.
Right.
Um, so I thought. Um, so anyway, yeah, because the property is a waterfront, the waterfront comes the front yard, if you guys know, related for. So anyway, yeah, because the property is a waterfront, the waterfront comes in front yard, if you guys know, releases required place success to expect within a front yard between the house and the water, as per section three hundred and nine point one B. Character of the neighborhood, there's about sixty, there's sixty-five improved waterfront properties within Redwood. Twenty-eight of them have swimming pools, twenty-seven of them, twenty-seven of them are between the house and the water. The character of the neighborhood is basically locating swimming pools, obviously, to the max. Back to alternative locations, going through their, it really is no alternative locations, using instance of the house. Location of the sanitary system. And Redwood Road. Many kind of adverts impacts the environment, would you be by land setbacks, both the D C and the harbor. And the harbor being right now. You know, hopefully with a variance from your board, we'll go back to the harbor committee. And that'll actually result in a new foot wide buffer as well, further protecting the environment. That's really about it. I'm here to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Do you think, Liz, do you think that the, one of these is supposed to be for the pavers and sand? Because that's, there's no such thing as that's not a thing. That's a structure.
It comes towards coverage.
It comes towards coverage, yeah.
Right.
There was an email from the building inspector, but I don't, you know, I don't think it mentioned papers and sand.
Did you place a notice for the?
There was a notice.
No.
Okay.
Because that's.
Did you have a certain, no, he meant a poster, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I'm basically, we saw your brother, so.
Yes.
I don't know. Is this considered a, a structure in a front yard? Accessory structure.
The inverse count. Towards coverage, so therefore maybe that there's structure.
Right. Because it's actually closer than the pool.
Terrace. Because in some. Like east.
Right.
If I put in white, it rises.
Do you think that one of these was supposed to be for the terrace, the pavers, and one was supposed to be for the pool? They're both listed as pool?
I mean, it's possible.
Why would that need a variance?
With the structure. We don't, oh, oh, we don't allow them in the front yard. Yes, 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 yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
The pool pad is actually closer to the street than the pool. And it's a structure.
It's part of the, yeah. Yes. But you know, it's due listed separately.
Right, but it's not in the notice, so does this need to be renoticed?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to grant the patio setback, then you need to have a notice, yeah.
We have the patio setback control, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's in a front yard.
Yeah, okay, I see that. I'm just looking at like number two on the notice, it just said.
Not for a setback, though, right, just for?
No, just for the front yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's, which we, it's, it's a formality.
Yes.
Because typically we grant these variances.
And what I can do is I could write the decision for the next meeting.
Right.
Including that, and you could renotice it, you know, you keep the hearing open, we notice a security detract notice, and we still have a decision by the same time.
So the applicant.
And certify it again, or how?
Yeah.
Okay. And post it again?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, you don't, you don't have to.
It's open anyway.
No, you have to renotice, yeah, you have to renotice, sorry.
Okay, so the sign in, then it's.
Correct, I guess. Yes, because we'd have to renotice the variance, so we'd have to put it in the paper with the additional variance, but the board, if it wanted.
We want, we'd like to give the applicant
Yes.
An indication of where we're gonna go, so that they know this is a formality that we have to go through, but we don't want it to slow you up any more than is necessary.
And there'll be a decision at the next meeting.
Okay.
Which there would be anyway, so.
So it really does time loss?
No. So.
All right, that's fine.
Could, so it's, does everybody feel the same way? I don't know, Ham, do you?
I have no objection.
No objection.
No objection.
No objections, okay.
No objection.
So could I have a motion to have our attorney write a, what would be the significance of the forty-eight Redwood Road?
So move.
Will second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Could I have a motion to table forty-eight Redwood Road to the April sixteenth Z B A meeting?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight. Great, thank you very much. So unless there's unless there's some unknown thing at the next meeting, we'll just approve your decision. Hey. Next is sixty-two Joel's Lane.
Evening, Laura Gold, Sheriff of Land and Services, President Danny David Burke, the new lady.
I'm sorry. Could you, because you're writing, thank you. Please, I can tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Sorry.
Okay, so this is very similar to the.
Make a motion to open?
No. Could I have a motion to open?
So move.
Sixty-two Joel Lane.
So move.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aight.
Ah, great.
So this application is basically the same as the one prior. It's about accessory structures in front yard on a waterfront lot. The structures include an accessory apartment, pool, patio, and poolhouse. The pickleball court, which was originally shown on the survey, is no longer proposed. All these, all these proposed improvements are to be located in the front yard where accessory structures are prohibited. This lot is located in an R twenty zoning district, it fronts on Round Pond. The property consists of one point two two four acres. There are no dimensional variances requested, and all improvements are proposed to be located as far from the wetlands as possible, as per the recommendations of the harbor. Second Harbor is surrounded by water, and this board has granted many front yard variances for accessory structures due to properties being located adjacent to the water. I can tell you ten Cove Road, fifty-two John Street, sixty-two John Street, thirty, forty-four John Street, fifty-nine Garden Street, all have variances for accessory structures in the front yard. And there is also a large deck in front of the house at seventy-five Round Pond Road, but we were not able to locate a zoning board decision about that. Not granting the variances would likely produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and could be a detriment to nearby properties. No one will want to see the swimming pool, poolhouse, and accessory apartment between the house and the street, particularly the neighbor who shares the common driveway. Also, as the proposed structures meet dimensional zoning setbacks, they will not interfere with the enjoyment of the neighbor's property. In fact, we have two letters from neighbors supporting the project from fifty-nine and sixty Joel Lane. The benefit of granting the variances cannot be achieved by any other method as the front yard nature of the subject property on Round Pond restricts alternative designs in order to situate the house and the sanitary system as far from wetlands as possible. Granting the requested variances will not have an impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Fencing and landscaping will screen the accessory structures from view by neighbors on to the east and the west. A drywall that would install for the swimming pool, pool equipment will be enclosed to ameliorate any noise. An I A O W T S will be installed along with drywells to capture roof runoff. There will be one hundred foot buffer area proposed adjacent to the pond, and there is no clearing proposed. People see this on the most recent survey I submitted, which is dated January twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. There was a mix-up with the dates on the surveys. The previous one also had the same date, but did show proposed clear. So you should, you should be looking at the one, dated January twenty-sixth, that shows zero required clear. While the need for the variances may be considered self-created, with the owner's purchase to waterfront parcel, this should not preclude the granting of the variances. And finally, the New York State D E C issued a letter of no jurisdiction on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. If all proposed work is more than one hundred feet, you can see regulated freshwater wells.
Great, thank you. Do any board members have any questions?
No questions.
I just have one. You indicated the pickleball was rescinded?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That was pursuant to the D E C, because it was within a hundred feet of the wetlands.
Okay, thank you.
No comment, other than I was going to question the pickleball court, but it's gone, so all good.
Great. Thank you. Okay, could I have a motion to close the?
Is anyone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone from the public to speak on sixty-two Joel's Lane? Great, could you state your name and address for the record?
My name's Anita Quarino, and I live at thirty-eight Joel's Lane.
Did you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
Hello, ladies.
Hi.
Gentlemen. What I'm about to say really applies to any application to increase. But in particular to this one. When it rains, or when someone power washes their house, deck, car, boat, any surface, the water collects contaminants. Examples, air pollution, pesticides, fertilizer, weed killer, even exhaust fumes, which have accumulated on road surfaces. If this offending water is allowed to percolate through soil, many of these toxins are biologically degraded by bacteria and fungi and physically removed, similar to the way diatomaceous filter cleans one's pool. This offending water can be intercepted and cleaned before it reaches groundwater and estuaries and the bays. When impermeable surfaces, like rooftops, game courts, laptops, and surprisingly pools, replace permeable ones like soil, this water cleaning system is sabotaged. Water rolls along artificial surfaces, gaining momentum until, when it finally reaches soil, it's traveling so fast, it doesn't have time to soak in, and it is so laden with toxins that the soil couldn't purify it anyway. This particular property borders a pond. Allowing a dramatic shift in the ratio between impermeable and permeable surfaces is so illogical. We wonder about and rail against the brown tides and the red tides and the shellfish. Yet these applications for huge houses, accessory buildings, outdoor showers, pools are routinely granted. So I simply ask you, and this is nothing personal against my neighbor, I wish them all the accoutrements of happiness that they want. But I ask you to look at this property through the lens that it's right on water, and that pond is going to get ruined, and it won't really be a surprise when, when it is. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So I did point out, but I'm just gonna restate for the record, all of these structures will have appropriate drainage structures, including the outdoor shower, the drywall for the pool, the roof runoff. The sanitary system is going to be an I A O W T S, taking the non, the unconventional, the conventional system out. And the D C's required a hundred foot buffer, so the runoff will be captured in a naturally vegetated area.
So will you provide, I, I guess you're providing also drywells for the driveway and the patio?
Correct.
Okay, so everything, every part of the surface is receiving some kind of.
Absolutely.
Drywell.
Yes, there's one, two, three, four, five, at least five drywells on this.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Is there?
And that's what I've been running off to the pond.
Right. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I don't see anybody.
Is there anyone else in the audience to speak to this? These also are issues that you may raise with the harbor committee, actually, they're really the ones who are more in charge of these environmental concerns. So there's no one else? Okay.
Could I just say one more thing about that? We are limited by law to to grant variances to our existing building code, so if our code does not really go into that kind of thing in the detail that you're concerned about, it's not anything that we can deal with. What you're saying is appropriate, but it probably needs to go to the harbor committee or to the trustees, and if there's something that can be changed in the code, then by all means do that. Just to, thank you for your comments, okay, thanks.
And generally, the way these are addressed is with providing ways to catch the runoff before it goes into the pond through drywells for all of the hard surfaces in the building. So are there any other questions or comments from the? Great, could I have a motion to close the public hearing for sixty-two Joel's Lane?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Second.
Ham seconds, all in favor? Aight.
Thank you. So I, this is something we routinely approve, you know, accessory structures in the front yard, so I'm not.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't. Agreed.
Good, I concur.
Okay, great. Could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for sixty-two Joel's Lane?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight. Great, great, thank you. Great, next.
The next one is three twenty-one Division Street, and I have my question to withdraw the.
Okay.
Good.
Could I have a motion to withdraw two twenty-one Division Street?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Thank you.
I'm glad that went away. That was a thorough application. I'm sorry.
Um, next, thirty Lighthouse Lane.
And that picture that you have, that was up there, this is.
This is, okay. Oh, okay. Great, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it is, Matthew Powers, thirty Lighthouse Lane.
Great, could you raise your right hand? Just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you, you may proceed.
Thank you. Uh, so thanks for, for listening to, to me tonight. I've been in front of the, the board prior to this about a variance for a pool that we're building for some, a lock coverage issue. Today, I'm just back with one more variance, we're seeking for pool placement agreement, which is eleven point eight feet, when fifteen feet is required next to the property line. Uh, we have spoken to the owner of Five Washington, where we share the property line. He has submitted a letter in support of the placement of the pool equipment. We will also be placing a fence or a barrier around the equipment as well to dampen any additional noise. But we do have the support of our neighbor, and we hope that this will be approved by the board tonight.
Great, thank you. Do any of the board members have any questions?
No, I don't.
No.
No. Is there anyone from the public to speak to pretty light house lane? Anyone on Zoom?
Somebody's got their hand up, Eileen Rosenberg.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, it's E. Rosenberg. We're on ten Carver and thirty-six Lighthouse.
Great, could you raise your right hand?
Sure.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Sure do.
Great, you may proceed.
Okay, well, the powers are lovely neighbors, and we, we, I think we kind of share a corner. And, you know, they're doing a lovely job with their house. I just want, to clarify, the, the pool equipment will be on the south side of the pool, is that right?
That is correct.
It's, it's on the.
The south side of the property that shares the line, or the property line with Five Washington. And so it's on the opposite side of.
That's actually the north side.
That's the north.
The north side, okay, great, yeah, yeah, we were just clarifying. So happens our bedrooms are back there, we were, you know, thinking about any noise that might emanate. I'm sure you're gonna be putting not only fencing and, and bushes and whatnot, so we just wanted to know where it was gonna be, so.
Yep.
Great, thanks. Good luck with it.
Thanks, Eileen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments or questions from board members?
Um, no, I'll make a comment when we have a vote.
Okay.
Can I add something? So this is on for a decision for two other parts of the variances?
Yes.
So you're gonna want me to add that? We're gonna have to.
This is a different variance for just the pool equipment, actually.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't know, how do you?
Well, you can, it's up to the board, you can either have me add it, do the whole thing next month, or you can just do the two tonight, and then we do the other one next month.
So, um, I guess that's a question for the applicant. We have a decision ready to be approved for the prior, um, the pool, the pool and the pool equipment in its prior location. Do you want us to go ahead with that decision and then do another decision next month for just the pool equipment? Or do you want to wait and do a decision for all of them all at once?
Yeah, let's, let's proceed with the, the pool itself, uh, now, with the old location, and then next month, we'll, uh, we'll find to have the, a new location of the equipment approved.
Okay, I, that's fine with me, is it fine with everybody else on board? Okay, great. Okay, so could I have a motion to close the public hearing for thirty Lighthouse Lane?
Make the motions.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Um, I guess I don't have a problem with this, considering that the neighbor doesn't have a problem with it, and it's tucked in behind a corner of the garage.
I, I voted against the pool because I didn't like the increase in coverage, and so to be consistent, um, I would vote against this as well.
Great. Pam?
I would. I'm in favor.
Okay, great, and Damon?
I'm in favor as well.
Great, so could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for thirty Lighthouse Lane? For the pool equipment variance? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, opposed.
We have one opposed. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of new business. And now we are on to decisions.
First decision is, um, for twelve Flubber Street, correct?
Yes, yes.
Um, this is a, a variance request to construct a two-story addition um, to the family residence on site, requiring numerous variances, um, requesting originally eight different variances from this addition. Uh, the property is, is quite small, comprised of four thousand nine hundred and twenty-two square feet and twenty thousand square foot um, zoning district, where twenty thousand square feet is required. Uh, the lot is approximately fifty feet wide, there's a lot with the apartment, it's one hundred feet, um, and they're proposing a two-story addition to the rear of the residence. Um, after working with the board, the applicants have refused the variance request, uh, including reducing the pyramid, pyramid variance request from one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four cubic feet to eight hundred and thirty-six cubic feet, uh, less than half of what was originally requested. And that's after hearing feedback from this board and the applicants have reduced other variances. Therefore, for the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board finds that the application has a five-part test and hereby approves of the application.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision as written for twelve Flubber Street?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
The next application, uh, for decision tonight is thirty Lighthouse Lane. This is an application to construct a new twelve by twenty-four foot swimming pool, pool equipment spa. Um, the pool equipment variance was removed, it's gonna be considered smug, but right now, before the board, the determination grants a variance to other sections, three hundred dash four point three, the three hundred dash nine point one eight four, the San Harbor Village Code, to allow it, to allow the proposed lock coverage.
Wow.
Uh, for accessory structures to be.
But there's a place for me to sign opposing.
Twenty-five feet permitted, and.
But I want to.
Oh, yes, okay.
Lots, twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. And for the reasons set forth in the written determination, um.
We get paid for each signature, don't we?
The board member of the decision and board member require is opposed.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to, um, approve the decision written as written for thirty Lighthouse Lane?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Great, thank you.
Next decision for tonight, and the last decision is for twenty-eight, uh, Jefferson Street. This was a, for request variances to construct in addition to the existing single-family residence, patio, pool, outdoor kitchen, all requiring variances from this board. Um, it was requested multiple variances, the lot is comprised of five thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet. Again, in the R twenty zoning district, where twenty thousand foot is required, the lot is fifty feet wide, for a hundred feet required. This is also a corner lot, um, with two front yards, one on Suffolk Street and one on Jefferson Street, causing the numerous variances to be requested. Um, additionally, the existing placement of the house, eleven, we'll have a property line and a creek, which is not controlled by outside of the rim, along with the front lot having two front yards, causing the, the majority of, uh, variances requested as part of this application. The applicant also ultimately reduced the size of the pool and proposed mitigation for the pool, and the board amended the release required and, and reducing the amount of repeat required in connection with the application. And the board, uh, three board members agreed to approve this application with two opposed, so it would be board member require, and board member willing would be opposed. Remaining in favor.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for twenty-eight Jefferson Street as written?
I don't make the motion to approve.
Second?
I guess you gotta view up to second.
Can Damon second?
Yeah, I don't want to second, because I, I was against it as well.
Oh.
You have to second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
I hate it.
So this is the, we, we, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, yeah. We're gonna need to, you have a problem, excuse me, sir. So, um, what was my third vote?
Alex.
Alex. We're gonna have to adjourn this application, because if we take the vote now.
Oh, it's not.
Yeah, so please make a motion to rescind the prior vote.
Okay, could I have a motion to rescind the prior vote?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
And then we'll have to adjourn it to the next meeting or decision.
Okay, great, so.
You have to make a motion.
Yes, so could I have a motion to adjourn twenty-eight Jefferson Street to the April sixteenth meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Yeah, I suppose. This is the boards where any titles that are also.
Yeah. Negative. Yeah. Great. Well, so.
Can't be it.
Uh, with five members. No, but if it.
Or somebody was absent, yeah, I suppose.
So could I have a motion to close the public meetings? The thirty Board of Appeals for March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second?
Ham seconds.
Second.
Aye.
Who made the motion?
Me.
Pam.
Uh, ham seconded, second.
Bell.
And we all approved.
We all approved. Thank you very much.